I'd like to call this greatest council meeting for order, call roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Mabry.
Here.
Commissioner Fabia.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the first place.
We're going to leave you to the flag of the United States of America and to their color, for which it stands, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll get started. Do we have any public comments? Just need for you to flip the switch on on the mic and just need your name.
Slip it towards you in the front there, Jim. There you go. Got it?
Yep.
Yes, my name's Jim Rapp. I know those three guys on this side and that guy over there forever. And because I'm one of the natives like most of these guys are, but the reason I'm here tonight is I have some property which is north of town, which is north of the interstate, directly north of Ace property. And I bought that property nineteen, in ninety-one, and ever since then, we've had issues with the water that comes off of, from the north side, or from the south side to the north side to get into what is called Epperson Run on my property. And over those years, we've been, you know, doing various things to try to keep the erosion down. We worked, a number of years ago, Kevin Hikes, who I think was, worked with the city engineer. He made some recommendations, which I might add didn't go very far. We had Walt Harmon came in and did some work in there, which didn't hold up because the mass of water that comes down off of that twenty-seven acre building is incredible and it takes a lot of, moves a lot of soil and rocks and everything else. I've done numerous things trying to keep the thing in shape and, I mean, it's terrible. What happens is there's too much water comes off at once, and then now, since the, since where the, what do you call it, tech park, I think that's the term, there's a continuous amount of water that keeps running. There's a little ditch that goes down through the Ace property and there's water continuing to run. Okay, if I step up there?
Yeah, please, I was going to ask you about the point.
Of course, here's Ace. This is my, my property here. I live here, and this is the waterway ditch, ditch that I have an issue with. And the water comes down across, now you can't really see it, but it comes across a little ditch here and goes in there. When Ace, from what I understand, talking to the people of Soil Conservation District a number of years ago, that when Ace was built, they were supposed to have retaining ponds. And there is somewhat of a retaining pond here and another one here. And that was supposed to hold the water and let the water go out slowly. It's never worked that way. In fact, I was told by the gentleman from the Soil Conservation District that those were kind of written off, signed off on, they didn't have to have those as total containment. But the water runs off real fast. The other day, and I've got some problems with Mr. Doug Ray, has been having this field tiled. They ran a main line down along Ace and it's dumping into the ditch now. But as I went on eighty to see what was going on, there's another tile that comes down and the tyler, Kevin Lee, who did it for Doug Ray over here, said there's a tile that runs up into this retaining pond, which speeds it up even more. My problem is, is the washout. And I brought a few pictures so I can show you. This picture, let's see. If you can see this picture, if you want to pass it down, that's looking from, I'm standing, looking to the southeast. You can see the water tower. That finger didn't come down. This is looking the other direction.
This is on the, this is on the north side?
This is on my property.
North side.
Right. This is looking towards the south and where that water is, right in, you see there's a little puddle of water. That water comes in there, then it runs through those rocks and there's a basin that the water runs into, which takes that over on the water. This is a few feet further, further down my waterway.
Are you talking about this?
Yes, right through here. This water comes down here and I think right about here, this water's running through there and it goes into this big basin, and then that basin, it goes into two tiles. Let's take it out. There's two tiles on both sides of that thing that drain. What happens in the past, what happened was, is a lot of residue, stalks, leaves, you know, paper bags, or plastic bags, I should say, cover that thing, and then the water goes around itself. It seems to really be working. Now, you'll see those big rocks on there. Steve Wright did that a year ago. I talked to him, he brought those big rocks. As far as anything that's done, that's the best thing that's happened. Problem of it is, it isn't enough. I need a little more rock on both sides. It's going around both sides. I think it was built up, I think we could keep, contain it in the center and then go down. The other, down there, that last picture I showed you was further down in there where it's eroding out my waterway. I've done numerous things trying to keep that water in there, or keep that soil in there, but it's about. It's just so much water comes through there so fast. And I just, and the reason I'm here is, you know, you guys are new, some of you folks are new, and I just wanted you to be aware with the situation that I know that Keith had, and since Steve is, I get, understands leavings, I just thought maybe I ought to come and take my case.
I knew Doug Ray had an issue with the property north of the water plant, yeah, the water plant. I didn't remember, I didn't realize. You had initial problem with the interstate from that water run through the, under the interstate?
Yeah, well, that, you know, Doug's situation's completely different. I got a couple of issues with what he's doing too, but it has nothing to do with the city. I had that, that little bit with him this morning. So, that's exciting. But anyway, I just wanted you folks to be aware of. And now I got another picture, and this is on my side. This picture shows, where have we at? Right about here, and this is Sixth Street, yeah. Right about here, there's a sign, and the city board some, I think some tubes for power underneath there. There's also a water hydrant on this side. And sometime this fall, and there's, there's the sign, we're looking from west to east, and they ran, they flushed the hybrids. And it, it creates some erosion. And I got nothing, you know, those things happen. But there is grass along the fence, there's probably fifteen feet of grass right along the fence, and I would just encourage when they do that, if they could get the water, you know, direct the water over on that grass, so that it doesn't grow to the fields. I just want to bring that, nobody knows about that, you know, they probably didn't know it.
The primary issue that you are speaking about, as far as a solution, you talk about bringing in more rocks.
Mm-hmm. I think it would help.
It would help, okay.
Because, I mean, we've done different things. I mean, like I said, we had Walt Harmon, where he brought in a little shot rock.
The tall, the big one.
Yeah, those rocks are pretty good sized rock. I think it would help. I mean.
Could we take a look at that?
You can, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, any questions for me?
We'll address them.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I know that Jim and I have talked about this in the past, and I think we need to, I'm hoping there's some drawings for the Ace Distribution Center somewhere that would tell us that retention pond is supposed to be there. Things may have shifted, there's nothing in that pond now, I don't want to hear it has been. We may have to go to Ace and tell them that we need to take care of this, because that's what they built that on.
Build what's in the original pond?
I believe it was. It normally is, and that's been a long time ago, it may have gotten overlooked, but I think, you know, Ace is a good enough community person that will cooperate and do it, do it's right, so.
Okay. We'll address them.
Thank you.
Can I, I'll copy?
Yeah.
Just your name. Rick Brooks. For those of you who don't know me, I've been visiting Princeton for about forty-two years now, after I married a Princeton girl, and have, my wife and I have lived here since June. And my own background is, I was teaching for twenty-six years at the University of Wisconsin in continuing education, continuing studies, working in youth development, economic development, health promotion, and it's called social marketing. In other words, using the tools of marketing to accomplish behavioral and social goals. And since I'm staying here, I've been just trying to listen and learn, and in that effort, I just, the other day, told up the number, I realized I've done transactions with something like sixty-one local businesses in Princeton. And I, I wanted to bring that up for a reason. One of the things I did in my work was found an organization in Madison, Wisconsin, of locally owned independent businesses. And it's now one of the largest in the country, has about eight hundred and fifty members. But one of the things that we learned is the power of helping citizens understand the value of knowing where they're spending their money and how that affects the local economy or not. So that's been a motive, big motivator for me. Mostly, I've been impressed by Princeton's history and people and, and the embrace that the people who live here have for the place they live. And I wanted to come and talk to you and just sort of bring you up to date and make sure you, you are involved and knowledgeable and participate to the extent you want in a project that I've been working with a number of local organizations in the past several months. There was a request for proposals from the Citizens Institute on Rural Design, which is a fancy name for a group co-sponsored by the National Endowment for the Arts, the Project for Public Spaces, USDA, and the Orton Family Foundation, which is a foundation in Colorado and Vermont that specializes in providing tools for planning and promoting civic development in small towns, rural towns. And they have a number of tools that I've found very, very useful. One shows up all around the country and is sort of a precursor of this Citizen Institute on Rural Design. It's a program called Heart and Soul that small communities and small cities have been involved. And the latest one that I'm aware of is Galesburg, which just recently completed seventeen focus groups to get the community vision of where they want their community to go in the next year, five years, twenty years, to encourage basically two things. One is civic engagement, getting citizens of all ages and backgrounds and abilities to work together. So not only civic engagement, but civil engagement, learning what motivates everybody to make the decisions that they make, both the government and the citizens. People who might just have fundamental disagreements, what we learn is that they learn how to work together for the benefit of everybody. So, I wanted you just to know, some of you have seen this, this is the request for proposal, and in essence, it provides a small amount of money, ten thousand dollars in cash and thirty-five thousand in technical support, to bring people in a community like Princeton together, somewhere between thirty and maybe sixty or seventy, they say, although sixty or seventy is probably too many, to get diverse perspectives and input and a sense of common interest and stakeholders from all backgrounds, to sort of go through what is their vision of a city, and not only the town, the city of Princeton, but also the surrounding area. So, I've been sort of talking to lots of people and listening to them, and this project, the proposal is due in second week of January, but the idea is to have a two and a half day workshop where people would get together and explore these issues, a very broad array of perspectives, and then come up with ideas that they can agree to and begin to work on, together with each other in the private sector and with local government. A key to funding on this is that the local government be involved. Also, that there be lead agencies, and Gateway has expressed an interest in being the lead agency. I've been talking informally to groups ranging from the public library to a Rotary Club, the Health Department, the Chamber of Commerce, Star Rock Country Alliance, several folks from schools. I've met with quite a few of the members of the Darius Miller Group about the park. Basically, I've been sort of looking as broadly as I can to see who might be interested. And what I've found is a tremendous enthusiasm for doing something that we can agree on that promotes the quality of life for everybody. And it ranges, the kinds of things that have come up range from helping Princeton become a bicycle-friendly community and, not to exhaust you, but there are standards and ideas and strategies for making it age-friendly. If you look at the demographics here, we're getting older. You want to make it accessible to everybody, but also promote active lifestyles here, and you can do that, there are ways to do that. Third is to get lots of people of all different ages involved, and one of the things that impresses me is the school system here and ways that we can involve high school students and young people in such things as a tree inventory, so you can have a plan for the trees in Princeton over the next ten, twenty years. And there's been a lot of receptivity to engaging young people to volunteer under the direction of arborists, certified arborists and others, to work together to say, what do we got for trees now? And how might we integrate them into a long-term plan? A lot of economic development impacts to be thinking about, and the one that, the thing that has really made this seem like a really good opportunity is the questions that you're asking, that we're all asking and working on about Darius Miller Park. My thought is on that, after listening to quite a few people and working with them, is that it is, it offers a major opportunity as a gateway to the city. Now, I'll wrap up, so I can talk for a long time on this, but it seems to be like the thing that we all want to think about, and I'd love to have your input and involvement on, to the best of your abilities, is we want to look at people who maybe are born here, live here, grow up here, live and work here. Those are the target, that's one of the target groups. The second is people who come here. There's forty thousand that come every year at least on the trains, there's how many tens of thousands that come in through various highways and roads, people who come and stay a short time when they park their car for the train, but there are lots of people that would come if they knew there was something here that they could remember, that they would value, it was something unique. And there are unique things here, namely, the rural culture, and I define culture as broadly as we can, the history and the, the personal stake that people who live here have in agriculture, and the life that revolves around agriculture. Lastly, I think we want to address the people who have lived here and might come back, and they are coming back. And they come back and they stay. People of all different motivations will come and stay here if they know that they're living in a community that has an active, engaged population and government who are working on everything ranging from the arts to health to economic vibrant local economy to tourism, that all of this planning and thinking is intertwined, and that we're visioning and committing to work together to make these kinds of things happen. So, that's the long description of the process involved. I'm now writing up a draft proposal for this. I'm hoping that the city will want to be involved, and it's a process that if it were funded, there will be six of these projects across the country funded. You find out in late spring, probably if you get one of these grants, you host a two and a half day workshop, and we would involve touring and seeing and observing and having people guide us through some of the strengths and assets of the community here. It'll probably take place in September or October. But whether this is funded or not, I think I've seen a real momentum that will result in lots of people wanting to be involved. They see that they have a stake in it and that they can all benefit. So, that's why I wanted to talk to you about it. I can answer any questions now or later, and I'll be working on this over the next couple of weeks. What's exciting about it is that there's such broad interest, and frankly, it's what I hoped for. It didn't surprise me so much. I think when people discover that there is energy and enthusiasm for things that they value, and we can accomplish something together, then they, they're willing to commit their own time and energy and resources, and it's pretty exciting to see that happen. So, if you have any questions?
I'd like to hear some more, you know, specifics. We can get, I know you've met with, you've met with Rachel, and you and I spoke briefly, but maybe sit down and give a little bit more into it here in the next week or so.
Sure, and you should know, I've talked to Laurie Bonucci and Steve Keizer and Sally and, you know, quite a few people on the Darius Miller Group, and I'm still looking for people who want to add some input. Frankly, I'm excited about Gateway's interest, because I'm being known, believe it or not, to a lot of people. Gateway is much more than services for people with disabilities. They're landlords in residential property, commercial property. They're probably the largest transportation provider. Now they're working with Ottawa as well as Princeton and Bureau County and Hudson County. So, they also have an interest in education and all kinds of things that intertwine with a lot of these different perspectives. So, I'm excited that they want to be involved. Okay.
Thank you.
Be glad to meet you. Thanks.
I'll go to Commissioner Newman for approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that the minutes for the regular council meeting from Monday, December seventh, be approved as written.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded, corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. And we'll go to invoices, and we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have bills and invoices for Public Affairs and Department of Accounts and Finances. Plan Department, nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Administration is sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Self-insurance, forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Economic Development, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Tourism, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Property Department, three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Community Development, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-three cents for a grand total for Public Affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances of three hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Mayor, I have reviewed these bills, find them to be true and accurate, and move that they be paid.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening I have the bills and payrolls for the Department of Streets and Public Approvements as follows. The Street Department, a total of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents. Motor fuel tax of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents. Waste water collection of a hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and six dollars and nineteen cents. Waste water treatment of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Waste water administration of fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents. The Cemetery Department of seven thousand, ninety-two dollars and eight cents. And garbage expenditures of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents. For a grand total of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And also, I want to make a comment that includes the purchase of the new garbage truck at a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars. So the grand total for those is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Mayor Querom, I've examined the bills and payroll, find them to be true and correct, request they be made.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I have the bills for Public Property and Civil Affairs. For the Police Department, I have eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents. For Fire and Ambulance Department, I have sixty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars, seventy-six cents. For a grand total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-six cents. I have reviewed these bills, I believe them to be true and accurate, and I move they be paid.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Tonight I have the bills and payroll for the Public Property Utilities. Electric generation total of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four cents. Electric distribution of eighty-four thousand, seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Electric administration of forty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Water treatment of thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Water distribution of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty cents. Water administration of four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. This brings a grand total of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. I've examined these bills, believe them to be true and correct, move that they be paid.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. And I'll go to regular business, then back to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have ordinance O dash one-five dash one-two dash zero-one dash ten, establishing a tax levy for corporate purposes commencing May first, two thousand and sixteen. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance, and I move that we approve this ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next item is the announcement that the annual financial audit for fiscal year ending April thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen is complete and available for review in City Hall and soon to be available on our website, and our city manager, Rachel, has some comments.
Thank you, yes. So this is our comprehensive annual financial report for the year in May, April thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. The audit is completed by Shearfield, Matlock and Company, they're out of Bloomington. I'll just give a few quick, a few quick examples here from the report. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to take those. So the total revenues for fiscal year ending two thousand and fifteen were about twenty-five point seven million, and the expenditures were twenty-six point four million. And then our year-end net position balances for two thousand and fifteen were sixty-eight million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. So yes, as Commissioner Newman stated, the annual report will be available for review if anyone's interested.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. I'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Tonight we have the comprehensive tree plan. The city of Princeton has been designated by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA community since nineteen eighty-nine. As thus, the city of Princeton commits to support tree enhancement activities, including proper planting, proper care and proper removal of all trees along city streets and other public spaces. And it'll be this plan that tells you how to care for your trees, look trees to select, et cetera. It'll be on file at City Hall as well, if people want to come in and take a look. I think that's all I know. Thank you, Commissioner Warren, and now we'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor Querom. This evening, I'm proposing that we extend the lease of the transfer station for one year, and in my request that we give permission for Rachel, our city manager, to go ahead and finalize the details, we give one year extension effective January first, two thousand and sixteen, and run through the year.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Then call, roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
I do have one more piece of business. Because of the upcoming city Christmas holiday and New Year's holiday, those here, Friday, December twenty-fifth, will be collected on Monday, December twenty-eighth, and Friday, January first, will be collected on Monday, January fourth. Please set your garbage recycling out by five AM, and as always, if any questions, they call City Hall or the State Department at eight seven two seven three three one.
Thank you, Commissioner Mabry. Now I'll go to Rachel for some additional reports.
Thank you. So I just have one item, our annual TIPS report is going to be submitted at the end of this month. We don't need to approve this, but I just wanted to review it quickly at this meeting. So for our TIPS report this year, we had a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars deposited into the fund during two thousand and fifteen, and we had a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars that were expended within the fiscal year, and this report will be available for review and copies as well, And this report will be available for review. I have copies as well, and we will submit that to the state comptroller at the end of this month. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I just have one item. We're going to be holding a open house for our new city manager, Rachel Skaggs. I'm not sure of the date yet, but we're hoping to have it here within the next couple of weeks. We will post it. We'll, we'll run something in the paper. We'll also post it on our, on our website. And we're hoping to hold this at the Crowder Building. And again, hopefully we'll have this, we'll be holding this here within the next couple of weeks. Do we have any old business?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I do. Um, I was just, last meeting, about the sales tax increase at $53,000. I've just been going through that for the last two weeks and just dumped on my diet. Driving around, thinking, looking him out of town, I would just like to make a suggestion. Maybe we could bring the owners of the old Walmart building back to the table and open discussion for something. Anything. Start discussion somewhere.
They've actually got that building and just put it on, on the market here, I think, in the last couple of months. Don't know where that's going, but yeah. I, I too am surprised at the, at the numbers on that sales tax. I thought it would have been higher than what we were last year. I was surprised to me as well.
What could fuel taxes, changes in fuel prices have to do with the taxes?
I would, I would think there would be more people coming here, you know, coming and shopping, I would think. I'm not, I don't know.
But gas has gone down, work life, and less sales tax.
Yeah, the sales tax on gas is, doesn't really amount to a whole lot, I don't, because it's, it's, it's one, well, what is it? Is it 1%? Sure. If it's flat on gas, it's about, it's like one, or two, 2% on gas? 1% on gas? You fill up your car, you're paying 1% on the sale, actually, not on the gallon, but you're, you're paying like 1% tax on the, on whatever your final purchase price is, and it doesn't amount to a whole lot.
Yeah, I think that's correct, no.
I was just going to say, to echo your comments, I know, I was off sick this last council meeting, so I apologize for not being here. I know that in the past, the new car dealers have always said that they're the second largest source of retail sales tax in the city of Princeton. Number one would be a big box store out on the north end, but number two is the new car dealers. And I think both of them have done a tremendous job in their marketing, especially Prescott taking over the Brony dealership. But again, if we can encourage people, it's all possible to buy their automobiles in town. It's a win-win for everybody. That's that young guy that's out there washing cars and washing the racks. He's, you know, going to buy a house, and he's going to employ, he's going to basically spend his money too, as a salesperson, as a parts people. So we really need to encourage people, do all possible to buy their cars, automobiles in Princeton, do all possible. That's a big sales tax generator.
And, you know, Rick mentioned just a little bit ago, the importance and the impact on a municipality when people shop at home, when they shop Princeton first, and we need to encourage that. Our chamber does just a great job, you know, and I know that our merchants are very heavily involved with what's going on in town, and I, I'm just very optimistic that we'll see a big turnaround next year. But I too, you know, was surprised that this members this year were down, so.
I think one of the biggest drawbacks against sales taxes is there's a lot of internet purchasing going on, which the state does not collect sales tax on it. So I'll have to see its letting and state legislature's lab, trying to figure out what to do, what's fair and equitable, until we solve that.
Yeah, it's very good point, and so, you know, it's a great point. Any other comments?
I would be curious on our pillow tax. I know when you go out to the hotels, motels, they seem to be packed with a, you know, a lot of things going on with the Fennel plant down, heaven, construction workers getting over. So I think our pillow tax has got to be up, I would think. It just appears like that's a, a win-win. I know that goes into a separate, totally separate revenue source for spending.
Yeah, we can do an update on that for next month.
Be great.
Yeah, I, I was told that our hotels are doing very well this year, and they're already well booked into next year, so, you know, we're getting people here, and that's important. And again, I'm optimistic that next year we'll see a significant increase in our sales tax revenue. You know, any comments?
Isn't the Lone Ranger?
Any, any other old business? Any new business? Public comment? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body under Illinois 120/2C5, and then convene our regular scheduled meeting on Monday, January 4th, 2016, 7:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Then call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.